In five, four, three, two, go to video. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Ventura County Planning Commission. Sorry about that. I just announced the Moore Park Country Days for the cable. I can't get out of that. And now we have the AYSO team coming. If you would please stand and face the flag for the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, if you do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Malator?
Here.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Here.
Commissioner Westner?
Present.
Commissioner Bartels?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez is absent.
Ladies and gentlemen, item number four on our agenda is public comments. This is set aside for any comments not already on the agenda. Is there anybody present that would like to speak on anything that's germane to the planning commission? I still don't have my theme music after these years. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of June 28th. Do I have any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I believe there were a couple of corrections just having to do with spelling.
Spelling, alright.
So move approval of minutes for June 28th.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion, not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item seven.
I wish to abstain from that. I wasn't present at that meeting.
Alright, thank you. August 2nd.
Again, minor spelling errors and names needed to be added to page 12.
Does the secretary have those names? August 2nd.
I'm sorry, skipped. Okay. So just the minor spelling error for August 12th, move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, September 6th.
September 6th, that was, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, no, you go ahead.
September 6th was the one where the names needed to be added.
Okay, did you have something else, Mr.?
Yes, on page two of September 6th, on the beginning of the third paragraph, it says, Commissioner Malator motion to approve the staff's recommended actions with following modifications. On that next sentence, it said, remove condition 30 because domestic water will be provided. I'd like to change will be to is now already provided.
Okay, was that at the time, or has that happened now?
No, the water was, excuse me, when it came to us for the will serve letter, the water had already been served.
Oh, I see.
They would, and so I wish just to say this has already been provided, and just as an aside, the will serve letter has been issued. That's my intention. Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other corrections or deletions?
Move approval.
Second.
Any further conversation? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Item number eight, to the 2007 Land Conservation Act contract, and our case planner is always wonderful, Julie Bula.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I am Julie Bula. I am the Land Conservation Act Program Planner for the Ventura County Planning Division, and just as October means shorter days, cooler, crisper temperatures, college football is in full swing, we'll be seeing ghosts and goblins at the end of the month, it also means, as happens annually, the LCA contract package comes to your planning commission for review and recommendation to the board of supervisors. The item before you is review of the 2007 LCA contracts, and I'd like to provide a very brief overview of the state Land Conservation Act, which is also known as the Williamson Act, and the county guidelines and the county's procedures for determining consistency of the new contracts with the guidelines, before I get into the specific contract proposals. The state legislature adopted the Land Conservation Act in 1965, and it includes provisions for agricultural and open space contracts. Until last year, the county program did not provide for open space contracts, but you recall that your committee reviewed a substantial rewrite to the LCA guidelines, and you recommended approval of them, and the board did act on them in July of last year, and incorporated provisions for open space contracts, as well as a number of other changes. In 1969, Ventura County Board of Supervisors established the county LCA program, and it also revised the guidelines at, excuse me, it also, as I mentioned last year, revised the guidelines to allow property owners to enter into open space contracts to preserve wildlife habitat areas, and specifically allow nursery operations, including greenhouses, to be eligible for contracts, among other various changes. As is stated in the county LCA guidelines, the purpose of the program is to preserve agricultural and open space lands, and this is accomplished through an agreement, a contract, whereby the property owner agrees to retain his land in agriculture production, grazing, or wildlife habitat, in exchange for a statutory percentage reduction in the taxable value of the property. That's just a fancy way of saying for reduced property taxes. The amount of reduction depends on a number of factors, including the length of time that the owner agrees to keep his land in uses compatible to agriculture or open space, as well as a number of other factors, including structures around the property, how much of the property is in agriculture production. The state annually reimburses the county for a portion of the lost property tax revenues, and if a landowner files a nonrenewal for all or a portion of a Land Conservation Act contract, the percentage of the property tax reduction decreases for the duration of the nonrenewal period, until it reaches the current non-LCA property tax levels. The county becomes ineligible to receive subvention revenues from the state for an entire or portion of a contract upon the recordation of the notices of nonrenewal. Exhibit four was going to include the summary of the subvention report, but this year, I'm coming to your planning commission a little bit earlier than last year, and the assessor's office is still completing that report that will then be submitted to the board supervisors and to the State Department of Conservation. So what I'm hoping to do is, when that report is summarized, and I include it in the board letter, I will include in your packet so that you can see a copy of the subvention report, so you'll get a sense of just exactly what, how many contracts we have, how many nonrenewals overall, and what the subvention payments from the state will be for this I'd like to briefly mention how the LCA contract proposals are processed, as I think your committee is aware, your commission is aware at this point. Once those contract proposals are submitted, whether they're for new contracts or for rescission of existing contracts and reentry into new ones, staff, myself, reviews them for consistency with the guidelines. And primarily, I'm looking for if it's an ag production proposed contract or an existing LCA contract that is now proposed to be rescinded and reentered into new ones, I'm looking to see the percentage of agricultural production on the site, and depending upon the size of the property, the size of the contract, the required amount of agricultural production on the site will vary, as is indicated in the guidelines. I'm also looking to see, and I receive evidence of this, that three out of the last five years, the property has returned a minimum of $500 per acre per year. Grazing contracts, which we have not had in many years, are a little different. Those are required to be a minimum 80 acres in size, and evidence must be provided through rental receipts, sales receipts, purchases of cows, or the other animals that might be grazed on the property. We look at those for the last five years, and we also need to see 20 animal units on the property. That in a nutshell is a kind of eligibility criteria that we are looking at. But with respect to the contract proposals for this year, we have a total of nine contract proposals for 12 new contracts, and rescission of existing contracts and reentry into 15 contracts. We have a total of 27 individual contracts that need to be reviewed by the board and acted on, and then drafted and recorded before, excuse me, before the end of the year, if they don't have any contingencies. The rescission of existing contracts and reentry into new ones are proposed to accommodate proposed parcel map waiver, large lot subdivisions, and parcel map waiver lot line adjustments. So those contingencies must be satisfied. Those particular land divisions and boundary adjustments have to be approved and ready to record before the LCA contract, rescission reentries for them can be recorded, and they do record simultaneously. So in your packet, you saw that the LCA contract proposals this year have been identified as items A and C through J, and they also, those correspond to the project numbers LC-07-0001 and 003 through 009 and -0011. And the reason we have two missing number and two missing alphabetical letters is because one of the proposed rescission reentries, item LC-07-0002, also known as B, withdrew right after the proposal went to the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee in September, because it did not meet the eligibility requirements for new LCA contracts, and also the associated parcel map waiver large lot subdivision had not been submitted yet. So it's anticipated that that proposal will be back next year for your commission's consideration. LC-0010 was withdrawn about four or five days after it was submitted, because it too did not comply with the LCA guidelines, and it was not anticipated that the planting that was being done would be completed such that it would meet the 50% or greater minimum requirement for parcels 40 acres or larger, and so that proposal was withdrawn as well. And again, it may come back in the future, it's really unknown at this time. Exhibits two and three that are attached to your staff report do identify the locations of the proposed LCA contracts, and it does go into some detail as to what they entail and why they do qualify for new contracts or rescission reentry. There are a number of pages of findings in your staff report, from pages 19 to 22, I won't go into them all right now, I certainly have the answering questions that your commission has about that, but these are findings that indicate that the contract proposals do comply with the state Land Conservation Act, the county guidelines, the county general plan, zoning ordinances. There's also on page 22, findings for zone change ZN-07-0002, from open space 10 acre minimum to agriculture exclusive 40 acre minimum, and this zone change is associated with item A, which is for Underwood Farms, Terre Haute Ranch, out in the Terre Haute Valley. And the Underwood property right now is zoned open space 10 acre. All parcels that are, that go into contract must be zoned agriculture exclusive. The land use designation out in the Terre Haute Valley is open space, so an agricultural exclusive zoning is compatible with that, so accompanying the new LCA proposal is also the zone change. I did want to say something about notices of nonrenewal. This allows, notices of nonrenewal are when a property owner decides that for myriad of reasons, he no longer wishes to be under an LCA contract. So he submits what's called a declaration of a notice of nonrenewal. Depending upon whether it's to nonrenew a portion of a contract or an entire contract, the contract nonrenewal must go to the ag committee for review. They make a recommendation to your commission, your commission in turn recommends to the board. That is the process required for a portion nonrenewal. For entire notices of nonrenewal, ag committee, your commission, and board action is not required. It is pretty much processed as a ministerial permit. I review it to make sure it complies with the LCA guidelines and state law requirements for nonrenewals, and then it's recorded prior to the end of the year. We did receive no portion nonrenewal request this year, but I am processing three notices of nonrenewal for entire contracts. As has been requested by your commission for the last few years, we have been putting together an annual list and map that show all the existing contracts that are under notice of nonrenewal, be it portion or entire nonrenewal, and that was to be submitted, to be included as exhibit seven, and handed out at your commission hearing today. Unfortunately, our graphics department is still working on that. There was a number of inconsistencies regarding some of the dates of recordation and the dates that these contracts would expire, and rather than hand you something that was not quite correct, I wanted to hold that back. I will be providing a copy of that, it's an 11 by 17 colored map, to the board supervisors with their packet, but what I'm proposing to do is, next week you are having a hearing, and so what I'd like to do is include that in the packet, so at least you would have it for your information. But as I say, you have seen this map before. It's just to give you an update of where we are now and what contracts will be expiring within the next five to 10 years. As I mentioned, the contract proposals, all nine of them, for the 27 contract, individual contracts, went to the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee for review on September 12th, and by a vote of four to zero, with one member of the committee being absent, they recommended approval of each of the contract proposals. The public hearing notice, as always, was published in the Ventura County Star, and hearing notices were mailed to the owners of property within 300 feet of the boundaries of each of the proposed contracts, as well as to interested parties, and if there was city limits within a mile of the proposed contract boundaries, the planning director of the city also received a notice. I did receive a couple of phone calls from owners adjoining LC-07-0009, which is DJ Farms in your packet, the Gary property out in Santa Rosa Valley, and I really think their calls were more associated with the fact that the onsite orchards, avocados and lemons, were recently removed to make way for planting of a new crop, for berries. The question was more associated with what was going on, is there going to be some kind of housing tract up here, as opposed to the contract rescission reentry? And Mr. Gary has spoken to his neighbors, and I've discussed with him, who called me, and he will certainly be in contact with them as well, but I believe I satisfied them by explaining to them that we certainly see crop rotations on LCA contracted land occasionally, and there is no issue with that with respect to compliance with the contract, as long as the property goes into production again as soon as possible. And it's anticipated that the first portion of the berry crop will be planted in the spring, and the later would follow in subsequent months. I also received a note from a property owner adjoining LC-07-0004, and this is MVP Properties out in the Fillmore area. And he indicated that he adjoins the property on the west side, and he has no objection to him entering into new LCA contracts, but that he would not be available at this hearing, and that was Robert Dudley. I did not receive any comments from any of the cities. I did receive a phone call from the city of Ventura, trying to understand what LCA contracts were, what the program was all about, but they certainly had no concern with respect to the contract proposals near the city. The staff report and the hearing notice were also submitted to AFCO, and I received no comments from them. There are a number of recommended actions for your commission, so let me just touch upon the most significant of those, but they are listed on pages, well, actually, the last two pages of your staff report. It is recommended that your commission adopt a resolution recommending to board supervisors find that the LCA contracts for items A and C through J are categorically exempt, that your commission find that the, and the board find that the proposed zone change for item A, which is the Underwood property, is categorically exempt, that you adopt all the proposed findings that were included in section C in the other staff report for all the contract proposals, that you adopt the findings in the staff report for the rescission reentries, which are items E, F, H, I, and J, that you adopt the proposed findings in the staff report for items F and H for lot line adjustments, and that you adopt the proposed zone change findings that I mentioned before, for zone change ZN-07-0002. This zone change would not go into effect until the associated contract for item A is recorded. And again, that zone change would be from OS 10 acre to AE 40 acre. It is also recommended that your commission recommend to the board that they approve the contract rescission reentries for the items described in the staff report as E, F, G, H, I, and J, and that the new contracts be executed, subject to the satisfaction of the contingencies that are identified in the staff report. Also, that your commission is recommended, you recommend to the board that they approve and execute the new LCA contracts for the items that were designated in the staff report as A, C, D, and G. And that would be it, as far as the most significant recommendations for your planning commission. This, the LCA contract proposals are scheduled before the board supervisors for Tuesday, November 20th of this year. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Hearing questions at this time? Commissioner?
Thank you, Julie, for a fine report. Will this map that you're going to give us, in the next agenda item, I mean, the next packet, will it show the county and all of the contracts that are currently in force?
No, what it just does is talking about the notices of nonrenewals. The board of supervisors about four or five years ago questioned the LCA program planner at that time about how many contracts are going to be going out of, well, how many, how many properties are going to be going out of contract, and what was the acreages of those properties? How many would be going out in the next five years, how many would be going out in the next 10 years? And so a map was developed at that time that focused on the entire notices of nonrenewal, thinking of that would be the larger land acreages. Well, this is one of the things that I discovered in looking at the notices of nonrenewal that we received for both entire contracts and portions, and that was, some of the portions are even larger than some of the entire contracts, because of the size of the parcels they're affecting. So the map that you're going to see this time is going to show both entire and portion nonrenewals, their locations, and indicate the acreage, again, that will be out of contract in five to 10 years. Commissioner Malator, if you would like to see a map that shows a green area identifying all of the contracts that are now active in the county, I can certainly provide that to your commission.
I would like that.
Okay.
And just a general question, over the years from 1969, when we got involved in this, has there been a trend, has it gone up and down, or has it been a general, has it been a trend to put more land under LCA contracts? Or less?
We are now, in the last five to six years, from what I've noticed in the numbers, are seeing increase in LCA contracts, and I think some of this has to do with the substantial cost of agricultural land, even if you're buying it for agriculture production and not for speculative value. I've noticed that there are some growers, say, the more marginal crops in terms of their gross value, that probably are still in agriculture production because they receive a property tax reduction.
Would you, in your opinion, would you, I'm sorry, in your opinion, would you think that SOAR would have an effect on the number of contracts that are being issued, because it'd be more difficult to convert this land from open space and agricultural?
I do think, at least from what some growers, and I'm not saying this has been a lot of growers that said this to me, but some has said, that since they are going to, are required to remain in agriculture production anyway, due to SOAR, unless they want to pursue a public vote and try to change their land use designation so they can develop it over uses, but since they're required to stay in agriculture anyway, they feel they might as well get a financial benefit from it, so they've entered in contracts for that reason.
Thank you.
Wanted to add?
Yes, this is Nancy Francis. I have some history with the LCA program, as I was the LCA planner many years ago also. To give you a little bit more historical perspective, when we began in the program, right up to the point where Proposition 13 was passed in 1976, we had many, many, many properties coming into contract. After Prop 13, it took a couple of years, but we had nothing but properties coming out of contract. During the time that I was involved in the program, which was in the very late 70s, early 80s, I didn't process one new contract. I was only processing notices of nonrenewal. Then in 1982, the board adopted the agricultural land use designation, which delineated those areas of the county where agriculture was going to be the principal land use. And since that time, we have seen the contracts come up, you know, keep coming up, and then we've kind of gotten quite to a steady level, but we've had a pretty good number of new contracts coming in. And so I'm not sure I can attribute as much to SOAR as it was the creation of the land use category of agriculture. And then on top of that, you get layered the green belt, and you get layered the LCA contract, and you get layered SOAR, but it's all on a foundation of the agricultural land use designation.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, any other questions of staff before I open the public hearing? Hearing none. I will open up the public hearing now. Do we have any speaker cards? Okay, is there anybody who would like to speak that's present today? For or against, or? Hearing none, let the record flow, there's none. Therefore, any additional questions of staff before I close the hearing? Hearing done, I now close the public hearing. I think we just set a record. In my tenure here, anyway. Ladies and gentlemen, this is why we get paid the vast amounts of money that we receive. Who would like to?
Mr. Chair, if I could make a motion?
Certainly.
Move the recommended action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the recommended action? Hearing none, all those in favor say?
Aye.
Oppose? You did such a wonderful job, we just flew right through it, somehow you have to buy doughnuts tomorrow.
I'll do that, and get you some maps later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bullock. I do remember a number of years ago, when we do this, that used to get squash presented to us. Just so you know, a year from now. Yes, I know. Oh, we got some nice squash. Item number nine, zone change ZN-05-0011, and our case planner today is Andrea Ozzy. Did I say it right?
Yes, Andrea Ozzy, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Like you said, I'm here to present to you zone change ZN-05-0011, and I was hoping we would have our slides up. There they are.
Excuse me, Andrea, could you speak up just a little better?
I know, we've had this problem before, I'll try.
Thank you.
Usually I'm too short, but today I guess I'm taller than Julie.
Until you get sparks.
Okay.
What was it, the Jacob slider, is that the one? Okay, I'm sorry, please proceed.
So the project that we have here is a zone change from rural exclusive five acres to rural exclusive two acres. The applicant is Lynn McLaren, and she's located at 640 Tico Road, which is just east of the city of Ojai, and just north of the intersection of Highways 33 and 150. And what she's attempting to do, this is a very rare case, we don't get these very often, where we have what we call a naked zone change, where there's no subdivision that's associated with it. What she's attempting to do is provide the opportunity for a future subdivision, and she actually does have plans to submit for a parcel map, two lot parcel map, and she would need the two acre zoning in order to accomplish that. And I think it's really important to note that, right now, at this point, she does not have to provide evidence of access or water, septic, anything like that, buildable site, that is all going to be taken care of at the time of the subdivision itself. And so, again, that sometimes can be a little bit confusing, because we usually get these paired up with the subdivision. The zone change is consistent with the general plan rural designation, and the Ojai Valley Area Plan Rural Residential 2 to 5 acre minimum lot size designation. There's only two other parcels in the Ojai Valley Area Plan that have that same combination. So those are both over in the east end, and I'll show you a slide of that later, and you'll get a picture of the impact that this single zone change may have. The nearby parcels, it's really a mix. There's a lot of different zoning designations, a lot of different area plan designations. There's R1, 10,000 square feet, R2, 7,000 square feet, RE, 1 acre, RE, 2 acres, and RA, 20 acres. And then as far as the area plan mix goes, it's also a long list, and it's urban residential 1 to 2 dwelling units per acre, rural residential 2 to 5 acre minimum lot size, which is what Lynn McLaren's lot is. Rural Institution- size, which is what Lynn McLaren's lot is, rural institutional, and urban residential two to four dwelling units per acre. If you take a look at Exhibit 4, which is in your packet, I don't have a slide of that, you'll see that this 5.5 acre parcel is actually one of the larger ones in the area. And it's also the only one in that cluster of green that you see there, that area plan designation, that has not yet applied for the zone change to match the area plan designation. The project, when it first came in, was submitted, just like any discretionary project, like any CUP or subdivision, was sent around to all the different agencies for review, and no agency identified any impact, any significant impact related to the zone change only. So the project could not be conditioned, it's a zone change. There isn't really a project side from just the ordinance change itself. So the planning division determined that this project would qualify for an exemption from SEQA, Section 15 305, minor alterations to land use limitations, and Section 15 061 B3, because the zone change alone cannot have an impact to the environment. This is the slide I was just telling you about that shows, it's a little bit difficult to see because I captured the entire Ojai Valley Area Plan, the majority of it. That red speck on the left is Ms. McLaren's project, and those, the larger blocks to the right, close to Santa Paula, Sulphur Mountain, those are two other parcels that have been developed, and those would be the other two that have the same zoning and area plan designation and general plan designation. So those would be the only two that would also have the opportunity to go through exactly this process in exactly the same way. And they're also the only ones who haven't taken advantage of the designation that they have through the general plan. And the planning division, or the planning commission, if you recommend approval to the board, then the next stop for this project would be to go to the board of supervisors on December 12, or December 4th, we have that scheduled already. But we do need to get the approval of the planning commission before we can make that final stop at the board. The facts and circumstances of the case lead the planning division to recommend the planning commission's acceptance of the findings as listed in the staff report. And that's all I have for you. Have any questions?
Any questions of staff? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Molliter.
This has gone before the Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Council, and they've approved it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, thank you, Andrea. Do we have any speaker cards from the applicant or any other interested parties for the public Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing. If there's anybody who'd like to comment before I close the public hearing? I need my music, man. Even the Lone Ranger had music, come on. I did want a quick question, maybe county council. I'm curious, I know under the MAP Act, if you're dividing in less than four segments, it's usually ministerial. Is it simply because we go, there's a zoning for the size, is that why we're doing this? Instead of just splitting it ministerially?
I think Kim or Nancy would be better suited for that.
A parcel map, which will be required in order to subdivide this property if this moves forward, does require the processing of a parcel map, which does require a discretionary permit and a hearing, and we don't have any ministerial approvals for creating brand-new parcels. The only kind of ministerial one we have is, in some cases, on lot line adjustments.
Okay, I'm just curious, because I know they have that right, if it's four or less, you can split property, but...
Yeah, four or less, you can split it by a parcel map, which is much less rigorous than a tract map.
Yes, that's right.
Chairman Westner, you didn't ask for disclosures?
Oh, thank you.
On this, and I do have a disclosure. I visited the site this week, and I walked around and I talked to Mrs. McLaren about the project and so forth, and mentioned about the meeting and so forth. So I have, ironically, I used to drive by that piece of property on my way to work for many years, and never really paid much attention to it. But it is a beautiful piece of property. So that, those are my disclosures.
Did you receive any information that currently presented or testified to today?
No, except for my conversation with Mrs. McLaren. But I do have a question about, when the lot is eventually divided, and if it's sold and someone wants to build a house and there's objections, does the process start over?
At the time, if the lot is divided and a map recorded, the lot comes with the, comes with a single-family dwelling essentially, because that is something that is approved by ministerially. So any objections would have to come at the time that the lot was being split. It can't come really after the lot is split and had been recorded and sold.
Okay. Any other disclosures?
I visited the site yesterday.
Okay. Commissioner Bartels? I have none either. Okay, then I will close the public hearing. What is the commission's pleasure?
I would like to move approval. I would like to move approval and all the recommendations that are listed.
Second, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four oh. Congratulations. Great job, Andrea. You get to buy donuts, too. Just for the public information, if the commission winds up complimenting staff, it's kind of tradition, they buy donuts. That's right. Because Pat Richards and I used to do that at City of Mar Park. So blame Pat on your way back up. Okay, thank you for your patience, ladies and gentlemen. Item number 10, report by the planning director. Kim?
Good morning.
Good morning.
What an easy day for us all today.
Yeah.
It's 9:10. I had my whole morning blocked out. And I'm going to continue this little tradition and keep it short. I don't have very much to report. There is a planning commission meeting scheduled on October the 18th for a tract map, and there is also one scheduled for November the 1st. That is kind of an exciting one. That is one where we are going to begin the process of converting our existing maps, our paper maps, into electronic GIS format, and that's something we've been working on for several years now, and it's really getting exciting, and so we're looking forward to bringing that to you on November 1st. Besides that, I just got back from the APA conference in San Jose. It was a really nice conference full of all sorts of good tracks and sessions, and the good news on that is that the next state conference is going to be held in Hollywood, so perhaps it will be easier for all of you to be able to attend at least a day or so, and I'm going to try to find the funds to get a lot of the staff to be able to attend where they're local. It makes it a lot easier. So that's going to be September 21st through 24th in Hollywood, and we'll keep you posted on that as it comes along. But that's all I have for you today. Do you have anything for me?
Commissioners, any comments or questions? I do want to let the commission know that there's a high probability I will not be here next Thursday. It's a moment-by-moment situation, it may or may not occur, but I just want everybody to know in case there's an issue of not having a quorum. So, but right now, it's 90% chance I will not be here, unless the other side decides at the 11th hour, like always, to do what I told them to do. You know where that's going to go. Okay, hearing nothing else, the planning commission is now adjourned.